Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, June 11, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm your deputy city clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill Number 1766. Resolution authorizing the City of Pittsburgh's Ethics Hearing Board to enter into a professional services agreement with DeForest, Kosenic, Yocitis, and Berre Donelli for professional legal services regarding ethics matters in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Bill Number 1767. Resolution authorizing the City of Pittsburgh Ethics Hearing Board to enter into a professional services agreement with Rothman Gordon, P.C., for professional legal services regarding ethics matters in an amount not to exceed $15,000. Bill Number 1768. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh are hereby authorized to enter into an amendment or amendments to extend the existing intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and the County of Allegheny for the enterprise resource planning by increasing the total amount to $630,000 for continuing support of the J.D. Edwards ERP system. Bill Number 1769. Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts by the City, of the City Code, the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from the Pirates Charities of $11,000 to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. Bill Number 1770. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protections Alternative Fuels Incentive Grant Program to add eight dual-hosed electric vehicle charging stations to the Second Avenue Fleet Lot, not to exceed $135,160 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 1771. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protections Alternative Fuels Incentive Grant Program to purchase nine electric vehicles to be added to the city's fleet, cost not to exceed $67,500 for this stated purpose. Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 1772. Resolution amending Resolution Number 98 of 2017 of the Residential Parking Permit Program Area KK in the South Side Flats Community, Council District 3. Bill Number 1773. Resolution amending Resolution 363 of 2018 for the Residential Parking Permit Program Area X in the Shady Side Community, Council District 8. Bill Number 1774. Resolution amending Resolution Number 13 of 2019, effective January 7, 2019, entitled, "Resolution Providing for an Agreement and/or Contracts with Consultants and Vendors to Assist the City in Developing Plans and Studies to Support the Development of an Oakland Neighborhood Plan and Provide for the Payment at a Cost Not to Exceed $250,000." Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill Number 1775. Resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to provide for the rights and obligations of each party with respect to the other and for payments in capital cooperation between the parties. Bill Number 1776. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 43rd Street Town Homes at 172 43rd Street at the recently subdivided parcel 49B, Lot 852. Bill Number 1777. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Elmhurst Group at 1 Bigelow Square, Suite 630. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1778. Resolution granting unto saddle properties to their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a handicap ramp with handrail at 1016 Fifth Avenue, Pittsburgh, 15219, in the First Ward, Sixth Council District. And Council President Bruce Kraus presents Bill Number 1779. Petition from the residents of the City of Pittsburgh requesting a public hearing before City Council relative to random and excessive bus route and stop changes by the Port Authority of Allegheny County without notice to residents in the Morningside neighborhood. The petition is valid and in accordance with the Home Rule Charter. That concludes the reading of the legislation to be introduced today. Thank you and have a great day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, June 11, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the rolls?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross, Mrs. Harris, Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith, Mr. Kraus, President.
Here.
Five members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? We ask that you would please remain standing then for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all. You may be seated. We did have one proclamation to be presented. I don't believe there's anyone here to receive it, and so we are going to move directly into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council?
Someone told me if you buy a better pen, you'll...
Yeah. It's valuable to you.
Is that true? Anyone wishing to speak before City Council this morning will have three minutes in which to do so. We ask that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, your time will have expired. I would like to take this opportunity to remind everyone here that is here to speak that our rules of council are clear when they state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may or could be before this council. We do not permit for vanity and we will maintain order at all times. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. My name is Zachary Lewis. I reside in 828 McLean Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15210. I come to this council today seeking some sort of solace. What my child and I have gone through in the past several years is beyond intolerable. I do not believe that there is any sort of fairness in the court systems here for children as far as a man standpoint. I think it is something that is seriously in need of dire, some sort of reconstruction or something. I also would like to bring up that the agencies involved need some sort of looking into as far as how just they are and the equalities that they hand out when seeking some sort of help in matters. Everywhere I've turned, I've been turned down for help. It has been pushed to the limits. I was given certain time limits to do certain things. It has not been respected in the same fashion when it has been called on the other side. I'm not here for myself. I'm here for anybody that's ever been here, what I've been through, and I'm here for This is, I mean, I can't really say too much more. I don't, I'm kind of at a loss for words. I've put my faith into the city and I've put my faith into the departments and agencies that are supposed to help, and they have done nothing but let my child and myself down. So it is with the respect that I ask this council to please look into this matter, not only for myself but for my child. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Zach. Thanks for being here. How are you?
Good morning, everybody. My name is H.P. Jackson, Howard Philip Jackson, Hazelwood Bound, Center of Life, Black Political Empowerment. The reality here, I felt that man's heart yearning because this here is a woman's city, a woman's state, basically, and him being a single parent and I'm a single parent myself. I helped raise my grandson. And the trials that you have to go through and being a single parent, period, but you have a lot of resources to come for you, you know? And we have to understand that. On the other side, basically, he was talking about young ladies that are single parents. And he was asking for assistance. And you know what? It's fortunate that a man is in a child's life. My age, I'm 66, and I was blessed to have both of my parents raise me in Iraq, and I had a dad to look up to me. Matter of fact, Father's Day this weekend. And to go ahead and make a stand, to be a man in this world, to go ahead and help direct a man, a young man, period, how he watches his father, he watches his hero, you know? You have that direction, that feeling that like you got hope, and you know you had that man that have your back. You know, we have parents, single parents, with our moms, you know? There's been a lot of greatness through our moms to go ahead and, go ahead and direct. But when you have that man touch and that man that has that will, because every head of man is of God, being as directed, not a biblical man and religious man, but that direction of having that human touch of a man for direction and strength is very valuable. You look at society today, and you have a mom that needs that man for security and that hope with direction, because it is a man's world. I'm not James Brown, but it's a man's world, all right? But it's, wow, the valuable of women, you know? If it wasn't for a woman and a girl. But that man needs help, and he was crying to the council and he don't know how to get it. I don't know his name, but I understand. But the way direction is today, our children, they're lost, they're computerized, robots. Matter of fact, you get addicted to your cellphones today, all right? You got alcohol, drugs, nicotine, and et cetera, but it's a robot society, and it's happening. You'll see it develop in 30 years. You know, people were complaining a couple of weeks about that Uber thing, all right? We need that human touch, and I want to thank you and enjoy Father's Day.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. I came down today to speak about Bill Robinson. Bill Robinson, at one time, was a councilman, and he was just last year or so, a county councilman. Now, years ago, I started working for the State of Pennsylvania in 1971. My oldest daughter was four months old. I worked as a, first I worked in the employment office, promoted, became employment interviewer, moved to California, came back, took about 17 tests, came back with the state in the Energy Assistance Program. It was called LEAK, La Heat, like, La Heat Two, different names, but we always had problems with the LEAK program. They would cut it. And I was working in the State Office Building in Nancy City, Vaughn. They're cutting the program, there's 500 applications. She said the governor needs to know. They said he was going to be at this resort. I went there, ran into John McCoy, Vietnam Vet activist. Some of you veterans, I know you know. He said, he told me how to meet the governor. As the governor was leaving, I shook him, smiled. I told him about the 500 application. They called us back to work. I worked in May Stern's LEAK program. When I walked in and we were having a meeting, he said, give thanks to this woman, because she's the reason why this program was extended. But it wasn't. What had happened, on one Sunday, I'm walking up the street, Bill Robinson. I had got all these petitions. I said, Bill! And he's rushing, he stopped, he said, I'm on my way to Harrisburg. Take him to the governor. And he did. He took him to the governor. Now, you had Wheatley, when I told him about shopping save, and I then went to the Attorney General about the rotten food with the white man calling our kids ins and using the F-word. He said, no, no, Wheatley, we want him to stay. Had the meeting down here, open hearing, he wouldn't come. No, no, we want him to, I called Ms. Hall. I said, sister, I know you fought to get this shopping saved, but look at what they're doing. She would not call. Jim Henry, I knew. Jim Henry would turn over in his grave because he fought for us. He would have turned Wheatley away. I had petition. He said, Ms. Brown, anytime you got petition, anytime, put him here. Blakely, he tried to stop me. Henry said, no. Do you understand? Wheatley knew there was problems with the Hill House. He told me he had a committee. I said, please let me come. He wouldn't. Because what my big mommy would have known that the Hill House is in trouble. Do you know Mr. Griffin? Wheatley, I mean, not Wheatley, Henry, good man, turn over in his grave. And all the community should be angry at our politician, because he won't come when you ask him to.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. May we have our next speaker, please?
Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Pittsburgh City, Lawrenceville, Bismarck City, North Dakota. Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President of the United States, 2020. Neural Network Society, globalintelligencesociety.org. June is Global Intelligence Society Sponsored Asian Intelligence Month. Tokyo has 30 million people, Pittsburgh 300,000 people, and the homicide numbers are almost the same. Which is smarter? Concern of the council of the City of Pittsburgh and the cities of Harrisburg, Sacramento, Lincoln, Nebraska, is the relevance of the idea global, the relevance of that idea to Shengji, Chinese, identified with city identity. The core general meaning of global for the Center for Global Studies International Interdisciplinary, which I founded in 1998, is all. Specific meanings of global vary in the 21 primary disciplines. For example, in the discipline of brain neural system studies, global, a global event involves all of the human nerve systems, brain structures, and brain neural nets, especially across the corpus callosum connecting the two cerebral cortexes. The CGSI objective is to get the best information at the highest level of intelligence for research, education, and networking in brain neural system studies and 20 other disciplines. The Global Intelligence Society evolved out of the CGSI, RLM, 2010, and to be part of the GIS, many have asked me about this, there's no need for forms, no dues, or meetings, or even changing your party, political party affiliation. There are a couple of things, a couple of ideas, and so one need. Idea one, all of us have, we have lowercase GI, general intelligence, a fusion of 21 approaches to intelligence, and any of us can get uppercase global intelligence, GI, a fusion of 21 disciplinary intelligences, using the contemporary dominant paradigms in each one of those disciplines to interpret disciplinary-based information, like rock info in geology. Geological intelligence and geological information in lowercase GI, say, rocks in the ground without the paradigm, but if it is uppercase GI, it's rocks moving around via plate tectonics, because that is in the paradigm. Idea two is that evolving an individual version of global intelligence is not dependent on degrees. And idea three is that resolving to apply lowercase GI and uppercase global intelligence to US local, state, national, superregional, and world problems is crucial to their solution. We want people to be involved, so you don't have to leave your party, just let us know, okay? We don't want your money either.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Miller. David, good morning.
Good morning. David Tessitore, Highland Park. I am here this morning to announce that we will be filing an ADA federal action on the issue of the failure of the Port Authority to notify residents of reasonable accommodation of where their bus stops are when moving them intermittently, when they could have created a long-term detour that would have been easily able, being only five bus lengths away. Also, if they insist on doing it daily, then they should be posted daily. I'm encouraging people to contact me at 412-532-8338. If somebody has mobility limitations that this creates a problem for, then they would like to have them join the suit. There's no charge. The attorney is doing this pro bono. In talking to the city here, I wish to alert you that in addition to the Port Authority, we will in necessity have to attach the water company and its contractor, because they, the Port Authority will inevitably be pointing a finger at them, and the City of Pittsburgh for its failure to ensure the protection of the rights of its residents in issuing permits for this activity to occur and its failure to oversee and correct this. So anybody wishing to join this action in federal court to be filed in the next few days, please contact me at 412-532-8338 or by email at ada@openpgh.org. It's with great reluctance, after three months approximately of having fought left and right, every avenue that I could possibly go down, to have this matter corrected, that we must resort to litigation. In addition to this situation, which is nearing its end admittedly, still may have two, three weeks, maybe more, until all of the work is done and the streets are milled and repaved, we would be seeking to have a consent decree that in the future, anytime there are such disruptions, that adequate provisions of reasonable notification are made and taken by all parties to ensure that the rights of the city residents of Pittsburgh are protected. I do hope that you understand this. Whether individuals will also be named, I don't know. That'll be up to the attorneys. But this is something which has gone too far, too long, without reasonable solution, and I want you to be informed. Again, 412-532-8338 or ada@openpgh.org. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Thanks for being here. May we have our next speaker, please? Is there anyone else here this morning wishing to address City Council? Okay. Seeing no further speakers, we'll close public comment for this council meeting and move into presentation of papers. We will begin with Councilman, we'll begin with Councilman Burgess, so Chair of Finance and Law.
Excuse me. I just wanted to introduce.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'll recognize you in a moment. We'll move to presentation of papers. We begin with Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1766. Resolution authorizing the City Ethics Hearing Board to enter into a professional services agreement with DeForest, Kosenic, Yocitis, and Berre Donelli for the professional legal services regarding ethics matters in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Bill Number 1767. Resolution authorizing the City Ethics Hearing Board to enter into a professional services agreement with Rothman Gordon, P.C., for professional legal services regarding ethics matter in an amount not to exceed $15,000. Bill Number 1768. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city are hereby authorized to enter into an amendment or to extend the existing intergovernmental corporation agreement between the City and the County of Allegheny for the enterprise resource planning by increasing the total amount of $630,000 for continuing support of the J.D. Edwards ERP system. Bill Number 1769. Resolution authorizing the City Code, the mayor, and the director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from the Pirates Charities of $11,000 to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. Bill Number 1770. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of, and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protections Alternative Fuel Incentive Grant Program to add eight dual-hosed electric vehicle charging stations to the Second Avenue Fleet Lot and not to exceed $135,160 for this stated purpose. The grant requires a one-to-one match from the city for this stated purpose for a total project cost of $270,320. Bill Number 1771. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protections Alternative Fuel Incentive Grant Program to purchase nine electric vehicles to be added to the city's fleet and not to exceed $67,500 for this stated purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1772. Resolution amending Resolution Number 98 of the Residential Parking Permit Program Area KK in the South Side Flats Community, Council District 3. Bill Number 1773. Resolution amending Resolution Number 363 for the Residential Parking Permit Program Area X in the Shady Side Community by adding addresses pursuant to Pittsburgh Code, Chapter 549. Bill Number 1774. Resolution amending Resolution Number 13, providing for an agreement and contracts with consultants and vendors to assist the city in developing plans and studies to support the development of an Oakland Neighborhood Plan and provide for the payment at a cost thereof not to exceed $250,000. Bill, that's it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1775. Resolution authorizing a corporation agreement between the City and the PWSA to provide for the rights and obligation of each party with respect to the other and for payment and capital corporation between the parties. Bill Number 1776. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 43rd Street Town Home at 172 43rd Street. Bill Number 1777. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Elmhurst Group, 1 Bigelow Square, Suite 630.
Sewer Facilities Plan for the Elmhurst Group, 1 Bigelow Square Suite 630.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman, Councilman O'Connor for Councilwoman Kail Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number 1778, Resolution Granting Unto Saddle Properties. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a handicap ramp with handrails at 1016 Fifth Avenue in the first ward, Sixth Council District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor again for Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair has one new paper, a petition for a public hearing. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kraus presents Bill Number 1779, Petition from the residents of the city requesting a public hearing before City Council relative to random and excessive bus routes and stop changes by the Port Authority of Allegheny County without notice to residents in the Morningside neighborhood. The petition is valid in accordance with the Home Rule Charter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll work with the clerk to schedule that public hearing. We'll move into public, or I'm sorry, unfinished business. We do have several appointees that were interviewed last Wednesday. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
President presents Bill Number 1713, Resolution Appointing Zachary Block to serve as a member of the Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire March 31st, 2021. Bill Number 1719, Resolution Appointing Monica Ruiz as a member of the Pittsburgh Equal Opportunity Review Commission with a term to expire April 30th, 2022. Bill Number 1720, Resolution Appointing Sarah Segal as a member of the Pittsburgh Equal Opportunity Review Commission with a term to expire April 30th, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion to approve? A move. Second. Discussion on the approval of the appointees. Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. That completes presentation of papers and unfinished business and takes us into Reports of Committee for Final Action, and we begin with Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1761, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for June 5th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1690, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in the Total Sum of $7,815.22 in favor of Eileen Papale as a final settlement related to the action filed with the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Committee of Finance and Law. Do we have further discussion on the bill? And then seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Next, we have Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services Committee. Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1762, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for June 5th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1723, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with Freedom Indeed LLC and Reverend Cornell Jones for professional services as a group violence intervention coordinator at a total cost not to exceed $327,465.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Public Safety Services Committee. Do we have further discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, then having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Next, we have our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith. May I have Councilman O'Connor for Councilwoman Smith? Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number 1763, Report of the Committee on Public Works for June 5th, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1724, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Greenways Trails and Recreation Program to provide funding for the renovation of the multi-modular trails located within South Side Park. In the event that grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $287,500 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 1725, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works and/or the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Greenways Trails and Recreation Program to provide funding for the planning of the renovation of the pedestrian tunnel located in Highland Park. In the event that grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $164,326.28 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 1726, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Greenways Trails and Recreation Program to provide funding for the renovation of the Riverview Park entrance at Maridale Avenue. In the event that grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $287,500 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 1727, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or the use of existing agreements between the city and Passcheck Plus MTR for the professional landscape architectural services for South Side Park Phase One Design at a cost not to exceed $338,096. Bill Number 1729, Resolution Declaring that certain city property as further provided herein in Highland Park shall be dedicated to a trail easement, and that certain other property be dedicated to a temporary construction easement in order to facilitate the development of a Washington Boulevard Trail.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Public Work Services Committee. Is there further discussion on any of the bills? Okay, I would only offer up once again, I'd like to thank the mayor and the administration for the continuing support to South Side Park, the community involvement, the friends of South Side Park, and everyone that comes together to do, to do great things there, and the, and the, the dollars committed to the project in the park prove the commitment of the community as a whole, and I appreciate that. With no further comment, then, these bills are now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, having then received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Our Chair is Councilwoman Strasburger. May I have Councilman O'Connor for Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1764, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for June 5th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1733, Resolution Requesting Authorization for the mayor and the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection to enter into an agreement with Avenue Insight and Analytical to Digitize Microfiche and Aperture Cards, Holding Historic Permitting Data, and Add to Them Departments Digital Library. The agreement is chargeable and payable from the following accountant in an amount not to exceed $185,600. Bill Number 1734, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 840, Authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Permit, Licenses, and Inspection to enter into an agreement to purchase a Sella Civic Platform and a Sella Citizens Assets Subscription and Cloud Hosting Services, so as to extend the contract an additional year until June 30th, 2020, and increase the amount not to exceed cost of $1,144,019.08 to $1,269,962.16.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee. Further discussion begins with Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to tell members about 1734, because I asked about the dates and the dollar amounts last week at the table. We don't need an amendment, it's just that this was kind of framed in a different format, but we double-checked. So the current contract that's expiring in June this month, we're extending for one more year, and I think you'll recall the conversation where the goal is to run it basically concurrently, so to have a duplicate system in case there's problems with the new system, that will have a lot more capacity across many city departments, and is a dramatic improvement over a Sella. And the increase is only $125,000 for the extra 12 months, so that we are sure that we have redundant systems. And I think that's, that's, you know, well, we like to examine these technology contracts and make sure that the public understands the dollars that we're spending on technology. This looks to me money well-spent, so I just want to thank the director of PLI for double-checking all that for me.
Thanks for your comment, Councilwoman. Without further discussion, then, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then having received the legally required number of votes, have finally passed. Our final committee of the morning is our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Our Chair is Councilman Corey O'Connor.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1765, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for June 5th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1722, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Habitat for Humanity Bennett Street Project located at 6932, 36, 6942, and 46 Bennett Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Do we have further discussion on the bill? Then seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Madam Clerk, I just have some brief housekeeping. Councilwoman Kail Smith is absent this morning due to a family emergency. She wishes to have that read into the record. If we could just have the last paragraph of that read, Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents, and I'll therefore be it resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Reverend Wayne Meyer for his service to the Sheridan Methodist Church and to the neighborhood of Sheridan, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, June 9th, 2019, to be Reverend Wayne Meyer Day in the city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion in a second, please? All in favor? Aye, motion passes. Thank you very much. That takes us into motions and resolutions. I do have several meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, council will be in an executive session in our small conference room as it relates to legal matters before this council. Tomorrow, June, or forgive me, yeah, tomorrow, Wednesday, June 12th, council will be meeting at 9:30 a.m. for pre-agenda interviews for appointees to the Commission on Human Relations and to the Equal Opportunity Review Commission here in council chamber. Our standing committee meeting will immediately follow. Then, as per the request of our Office of Management and Budget, the mayor's Office of Management and Budget invites residents to potholes and pierogies, a dinner, and a discussion of the 2020 Capitol Budget. These public meetings provide citizens, these public meetings provide citizens the opportunity to learn about the budgeting process, and to speak with residents about the priority projects, to pose questions to the panel from city departments, and to provide valuable feedback for our 2020 Capitol Budget. The first meeting of the evening, will be of the evening, Thursday, June 13th, at the Children's Museum in the North Side. The second will be the evening of Tuesday, June 18th, at the Pittsburgh Federation of Teachers on the South Side. Child care and interpretive services are available for those who wish to register by June 9th. For more information, we ask you to go to pittsburghpa.gov/OMB/CIP. Again, that's pittsburghpa.gov/OMB/CIP. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Harris.
Yes. First, Brooklyn, would you like to stand up? Brooklyn is in my office as an intern for the summer. Brooklyn Lowry, and she lives in Spring Hill, same neighborhood as I do. She attended Shady Side Academy High School, and she's on her way to Howard University College. So I am very happy to have her in my office, and usually, Brooke, usually I try to get you in at the beginning, so you come back and do some of the work that we had lined up, but this is pick-on Women's Week. So, thank you for staying here for the whole meeting instead of going in the back. Okay, you can have a seat.
Okay, anything else from members? Okay, seeing nothing further, may I have a motion to excuse our absent member, approve our minutes, and adjourn our meeting? May I have a second? Can you hear a second, somewhere? Second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.[1770.15]